Two more to go. Oh, Levy Isaacson's here. One more, we'll start the meeting. Hi, Levy.
Looked like John there with his reading glasses up top. You're on mute, John.
They are my old manager.
Levy's making fun of all of us wearing glasses. He doesn't have glasses, right?
Listen, I'm getting up there. They say he denied it for like four or five years and then he just give in.
I didn't need them. My staff got them for me at the egghead. I didn't need them.
It's six o'clock. It's six o'clock, so we're live. So, watch what we say. Let's wait.
Live or is it?
Okay. Come on, everybody's coming on. I need more members.
I believe Bruce was supposed to join until seven. And Jake said he's coming as well. Oh, Jake's on.
Yeah, about that, there he is. Okay, I don't see him yet. Jakey Meyer, I see your name. Jakey, are you there?
I am.
Okay, so we have Mr. Garfield, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Sable, me, Mr. Isaacson. So we have five, right, Ally?
I'm sorry, I was reading something else as you were counting. One, two, three, four, five. Where'd Mr. Garfield go? Did we lose Mr. Garfield?
I see him on here.
Oh, I see. Sorry, I just wasn't seeing your name. While we have a minute and we don't have a million people here, phone number, call-in user ending in nine-two, do you want to identify yourself, just so I can mark you for later? Call-in user ending in nine-two, do you want to identify yourself for the record? Okay, we can worry about it later.
He doesn't want to talk to you. Okay, one second, please. Okay. At this time, call the meeting to order. Let's rise and salute the flag. Mr. Jackson, we have the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Hey, Ally, could you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board of the Hold on just a moment, I'm sorry. I'm going to mute whoever that is. John, do we have a lady assisting us tonight that I should give voting rights or muting rights to?
Yeah, Julianne said that she was going to be on. I don't
Oh my god. Okay. Let me see who else is in.
Let me call her and call down with you.
Okay, I think I got it. The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive notice of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Here.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Stern.
I didn't see him yet.
I did, but I saw him.
I'm sorry. Hi, Pauls.
Hi, Mr. Stern. Mr. Stern is waving.
Okay.
Mr. Sable.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner?
Here.
Mr. Isaacson? Mr. Meyer?
Here.
I heard both Mr. Isaacson and Mr. Meyer there. Thank you very much.
Yes. The rest are not here. Okay, you're not even calling them. Okay.
Mr. Herzl, I just have to... Julianne McClear told me that she had a power outage at her house from the thunderstorm. So she's heading over to her parents. She'll be logging, she'll be able to assist in five minutes. And then also, I just want to make sure, Ally, we got that letter from Lori Leeds. That matter's on and we're going to, if we don't hear from her, we'll at least be able to have her
That's listed first under public hearing. I was a little unclear after we got the letter. I think the letter was also indicating that she wanted to speak. So when we get to that section, we can open it public and see if she's on the call.
Okay, great. Mr. Jackson, can you please swear in the professionals?
Where, Mr. Magno, please raise your testimony before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Okay, thank you. Resolutions. And Ally, just say who can vote?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen because it has an easy reminder of who can vote and who can't.
Be one step ahead of everybody.
I've learned. The first is SD twenty-four twenty-six. This is a correcting resolution for a minor subdivision. Mr. Flansbrough and Mr. Meyer were not present when we first heard this application. Everyone else can vote.
Okay, do we have a motion on the first application? Anybody want to... Anybody make a motion?
Moved.
Moved. All seconded, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number two.
The second one is SP twenty-four oh-six for River Avenue Properties. It's a major site then for an office building on Chestnut. We did have Mr. Jackson summarize some public comments that we had received via email. However, one of the emailed comments had concerns that his comment wasn't covered in its entirety. So Mr. Jackson had indicated that we could read his comment into the record before adopting the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Table of paintings next to.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, you're muted.
Yes, I do. Ally, do you have that available?
Uh, yeah, just a moment. I emailed it to you earlier today. I'll pull up my email.
Got it. Okay, I have it right here. I'll read it. Thank you. This is a comment from Joel Burke. Concern, I am writing, I'm writing in regards to the proposed building, the twenty-four oh-six River Avenue. I live nearby and as anyone who has passed by can attest, the Chestnut River Avenue are small and narrow. I'm worried this will become a big danger for cars passing through as there's no room for cars to safely turn right and left. Another concern is parking. Commercial vehicles and trucks will not have room to turn onto the property. As the proposed design states, the trucks will have to park outside. This will create an even bigger hazard for all those driving by. Joel Burke wrote. So it's been read into the record.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, what is this letter? This is from the public comment that was left out of the record?
Yes, it apparently was left out and under the circumstances, I think the board should re-vote and consider if that letter has any impact on their vote. And you should just go through it.
Okay, Ally, who made the motion and who seconded on that? If you can please tell me.
At that meeting, we had a motion made by Mr. Meyer and seconded by Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Stern voted no. Mr. Renner, Mr. Isaacson, and Mr. Sable did not vote on that application. The conditions were that there would be no medical offices, the circulation plan would be adjusted to accommodate FedEx trucks, private trash would be done with rollout containers, there is a total square footage of the building that was limited, no curb and sidewalk waiver was granted.
Okay, thank you, Ally. I just want to say my opinion. I think that the
We don't have a quorum for this. We don't have a quorum. The members that acted on it before are not on. You don't have five members that were on the same application, I think.
Okay, it's a good point, Mr. Sable. And Mr. Jackson, what's the answer to that?
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Mr. Jackson, also, this is Adam Pfeffer. I was the attorney for, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I was unaware that there was an issue going on. No, lawyers don't give testimony. I don't get sworn in. I was unaware that there was even an issue or concern of this. I believe this comment is somewhat duplicative of other comments that were made during the hearing. We addressed these comments, we addressed it with regard to circulation, we addressed it with regard to size of vehicles. As a bonus of caution, I mean, you're now reopening it. I don't really understand what we're doing. If we, I do agree with Mr. Sable regarding who could vote on it, the different people are here. It's not just a regular resolution. I mean, maybe we move this to the next meeting to do the resolution?
Okay. Ally, you come over to next week just to make sure we have a quorum, but I'm in agreement with
Well, why don't we do this? Listen, this is uncharted territory. We're improvising the rules as we go along here. I recommend that the board adopts the resolution because it was approved and that we circulate the letter. We hold the matter open. We don't, we hold the resolution pending, giving everybody who voted in favor the opportunity to advise the chair through an email if that public comment changes their vote.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I concur with Mr. Pfeffer. We spent a lot of time on this application and there were a lot of neighbors who had this concern. I think the board took it into consideration. We spoke about the trucks, we spoke about parking on the road, and I think the board voted, the majority voted favorable for it. So
So the members that voted favorably, and there had to be at least a majority of the quorum. Ally, how many members voted in favor of it?
I'm sorry, just a moment.
Okay.
In favor were Mr. Garfield, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Herzl, and Mr. Meyer.
All right, Mr. Meyer is on tonight. I don't see, oh, there he is. So let's ask Mr. Herzl. Mr. Meyer and Mr. Garfield, with that letter pending, does that persuade you one way or the other? Does it cause you to change your vote?
Nothing, no persuasion whatsoever.
Okay, and I said my opinion before, because I think everything was, but on the record, whatever says in this letter was put on the record and the board took the action to approve it.
What about Mr. Garfield? Mr. Garfield, does it make any difference to your vote?
Same thing, I approve.
Okay, so we still have to send it to two members. I recommend, now look, we're making this up, not making it up, we're going along. There's no page in the manual to do in a virtual meeting in this circumstance. As far as I'm concerned, it's important that this person's voice gets heard by everyone who voted. So we have three people who already indicated it does, it would not affect their vote. I recommend that you make a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and then we're going to hold it pending confirmation from the two remaining members. It could be sent to them by email and they could send correspondence to the secretary whether it would have an impact.
Okay, based on that, I would ask for a motion to approve temporarily this resolution.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Garfield, moved. All seconded.
Seconded.
Mr. Meyer seconded. All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last one, Ally. Anymore?
SP twenty-four thirty-eight A for Megdal Baze Yakov.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved.
Moved, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Ally, I just have a side question. Why on the original agenda, the resolutions, you had five? There's one Broadway you took out. The resolution is not finished?
It wasn't done in time for this meeting.
Okay, you anticipated it should be done, so you put it on the agenda and now it wasn't done, right?
Yeah, with us meeting weekly, everything's a little more rushed than it usually is and there just wasn't enough time for Mr. Jackson's office to get all of them done.
Okay, no problem. Okay, we're on to the public hearing. Ally, are there any changes to the agenda, the published agenda?
There are. Oh, I'm sorry, there was an application on here, for anyone who's listening, for a large subdivision across N Massachusetts. You'll notice that application is no longer listed on this agenda. It's because notices were sent incorrectly.
Okay, so I'll announce it. It's Ishiva Hamde Satorah, SD two-four-seven-seven.
Right. That application's not being heard tonight. It's being carried to a later meeting where they will be providing new notice to the correct neighbors. I believe it's June twenty-second that we have that scheduled for, but like I said, we don't need to make an announcement. They're sending a new legal notice.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, I did just receive an email right before the meeting started from Mr. Zinas, raising questions about the validity of the notice and whether or not the board can hear Benos Devora because there's a hole in the plans. I don't know if the board wants to address that now or get through the two small applications and start.
Let's go straight.
Okay, this first application, SD twenty-four seventy-five for five nineteen Arlington, is a minor subdivision to create for lots. The board had previously heard this on May fourth and approved it. We received comments from a neighbor that they had wanted to speak at the meeting and were not given the opportunity. So Mr. Jackson asked that we reschedule this under the public hearing of the section of the agenda so that the public can comment. We will reopen for that public comment and then take a new call from the board. I'm sure Ms. Leeds is here, but I can tell you that Mr. Renner and Mr. Isaacson were not here when we first heard the application, so I don't believe either of them can sit on this public comment portion.
Which one is it?
Twenty-four seventy-five for five nineteen Arlington.
Okay.
Ms. Meyer, I believe that what the comment and the concern is, that Ms. Leeds looks like she just wants to have confirmation that the, that her property is not going to be used. She wants to tell the board. So it might be satisfactory if the engineer and the board can just assure her that that will be in the resolution, et cetera. So, Mr. Herzl, with your permission, if I could read what her comment is into the record.
Yes, please. And I just want to apologize to Mrs. Reed if she said that she couldn't get heard. I apologize. It was notified then?
I think before we read though, we should just check that the call-in users are not her because I was under the impression she wanted to speak.
Okay, so is it, can you please unmute everybody?
Yeah.
Before we do that, let me read it to the board and I'd like to know from Mr. Magno whether, you know, this is something that actually was part of the approval. It looks like it was. Okay? And then, of course, we'll hear from Ms. Leeds as well, but I think if he can assure her that, that might satisfy her and it may not. We'll find out. I'm not saying it has to, I'm just saying it might. So let's give that a try first. And there we go. So this is from Lori Leeds of twenty-one Oxford Drive, the state of June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. It's addressed to the board. And what it says, Dear Planning Board Members, I am Lori Leeds, owner of block nine thirty-one lot one, which is across from, in fact, let me share my screen while I'm doing this. Hold on, I gotta bear with me.
Do you want me to share it?
I think I Tell me when it comes up.
You're good. Yep, you're good.
I'm Lori Leeds, owner of block nine thirty-one lot one, which is across from Vine Avenue from block seven sixty-three lot eight. I plan, and plan made by New Lines Engineering, there is a property asphalt turnaround on my property. There is absolutely no need for this turnaround. One house away, fifty feet down from block seven sixty-three lot eight, there is a turnaround on my property which connects to a finished road which complies with the residential site improvement standards. This turnaround connects to a finished road, to a gravel and dirt road which is already well-traveled to Cedar Bridge Avenue. This turnaround adversely impacts my property with additional impervious coverage and creates additional disturbance. In New Lines' plans, there is an arched oil line on my property, block nine thirty-one lot one, at the end of Vine Street and Cedar Bridge. Hold on a second. Labrador one. I gotta go somewhere else. New Lines' plans for a road do not state they do anything there. They do not have permission to do anything there. I want confirmation that nothing will be done on the corner of Vine and Cedar Bridge Avenue, block nine thirty-one lot one, or on any property connected to block nine thirty-one lot one. Looking forward to providing testimony per attorney, John Jackson, ruling that the meeting must be open for my public testimony and then a vote taken after my testimony. Thank you for your kind consideration, Lori Leeds. So before we determine whether Ms. Leeds is on the line, I have a question for Mr. Magno. And I'd like to ask whether, you know, and even for the board members, is what her concern is, my recollection is that there was no turnaround on her property and her property was not being used. Can we give her that confirmation or am I off base?
It sounds like her property's at the corner of Cedar Bridge and Vine. This project could go that far.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jackson, again, we've Glenn Lyons here, Adam Pfeffer, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I believe we can, Mr. Lyons can clarify this. I believe there was a hammerhead that the township had requested be at the end of the street. We have no issue not putting that hammerhead in. If I can, I believe Glenn had previously been sworn in on this application, but if we can, swear him in again if you require so.
Sure. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, can they address that and then we'll look for Ms. Leeds? Is that okay, Mr. Herzl?
Think he's muted.
The hammerhead's in the right of way. Why would we want, why would we want to eliminate that?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was muted. Could you swear in Mr. Glenn Lyons?
Glenn, you swear from testimony before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, Glenn, basically, I want you to put on the record, are we touching Mrs. Leeds' property at all? Are we going anywhere near on her property?
No, the, that, Ally just pointed out, that red line is her property line and that's the other right-of-way line. The gray hatched square, which Ally's gonna, right there, that is the turnaround that the township engineer required when the administrative approval was given for the duplex on the other side of the road.
That's township property?
And that, yes, that entire piece of that turnaround is within the right-of-way of Vine Avenue.
Okay, so we're not touching her property in the one inch. I wanted that to be clear on the record.
Right.
Right, so I don't believe that that was the only concern that she had. I think her concern was also that the turnaround nearby, you know, let's give Leeds on and have her
There's only a number two-nine.
All right, that sounds like Ms. Leeds. Is that you?
Yes.
All right, is your number, okay. All right, Ms. Leeds?
Please, I want to talk.
Okay, one second, when you could talk. You have to be sworn in. One second and please don't scream into the mic.
Ms. Leeds, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, great. First of all, can you, do you have a camera? Can you turn on your camera?
I don't have a camera. I'm talking on the phone.
Okay.
I don't have a computer.
We'll accept it. It's okay.
All right, great. Can you please tell the board what you're confirming and what you'd like to take into account?
I'm not hearing you now. I'm not hearing you. I can't handle it.
Can you please tell the board what you want to tell them?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Wait, can I just, can I just get some papers here, please?
Yes.
Not here. One moment, please. Okay, can I read what I want to say, please?
Yeah.
All right, I'm Lori Leeds, owner of block nine thirty-one lot one, which is across Vine Avenue from block seven sixty-three lot eighteen. And plans made by New Lines Engineering, there is a property asphalt turnaround on my property. There is absolutely no need for this turnaround. One house away, fifty feet down from block seven sixty-three lot eight, there is a turnaround on my property which connects to a finished road which complies with the residential site improvement standards. The turnaround connects to a finished road, to a gravel and dirt road which is already well-traveled to Cedar Bridge Avenue. This turnaround that they want to build adversely impacts my property with additional impervious coverage and creates additional disturbance. And you only put a turnaround on property when it leads to no exit. And this turnaround that's there now leads to Cedar Bridge Avenue and it leads to an exit. When it only leads to a dead end is when you have to put a turnaround. Otherwise, by the, I'm trying to find. One minute, please. The residential site improvement standards state that you only have to have a turnaround when it leads to, hello? When it leads to no exit. All right, when it leads to no exit. But this turnaround that's there now, which is on my property, it goes from, from the, oh god, from the township right-of-way into my property, the one that's there now. And there's no reason for another one. And then, I want to go on. There's absolutely Now, New Lines' plans also put an arched oil line on my property, block nine thirty-one and one, at the end of Vine Street and Cedar Bridge Avenue. And I, New Lines' plans for a road does not state that they're doing anything there. And they do not have permission to do anything there. And I would like confirmation that nothing will be done on the corner of Vine and Cedar Bridge and also on block nine thirty-one and one, on any property connected to that block. And I'm looking forward to providing, and I also, New Lines' plans and the planning board gave five nineteen Arlington LLC the right to build the road and to do the grading. And I would appreciate a copy of those plans and a certified notice the week before of when they're doing it. Because I'm right across the street from that road and I would like to know what's going on because everything that goes on there affects me. And I really appreciate you letting me talk tonight and I look forward, you know, to your clearing decision. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I was also told, I was told that I would be able to talk tonight.
You did?
Yes, I did. And also that there would be a vote tonight. Yes, I did, and also that there would be a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would like to, Mr. Magno.
And thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, Dave?
Yes.
Is there anything, I'm gonna ask you the question again. She's saying that we're going on her property. Is there anything on her property?
Not on the plans that I'm looking at. Everything is within the right-of-way, and...
No, it's not.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely, it's not.
Okay, Mrs. Leeds, only one at a time. You had your town, and I'm confirming that we have, with the township engineer and the applicant's engineer, if it's on your property. If it's on your, through the chair? Yes.
Mr. Herschel, excuse me, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Stern, hold on one second. I think that was, Ms. Leeds, we're going to put you on mute for now. So, right now, your job is to listen. We're going, we're going to, it's not your turn to speak. So we're gonna mute everybody's microphone who's not, whose turn it is not to speak, but you will be given the chance to respond to anything that's said, and we will ask you questions. But in the meantime, everybody has to get muted so that the person who's speaking can be interrupted. That's how we preserve order. And you will absolutely get the chance to respond. So the chairman's going to call on people one at a time, and in the meantime, everyone else will only speak when recognized by the chair. That includes everybody. So with that, with that said, we're going to, you know, put the mutes on. And Mr. Chairman, I believe it was Mr. Stern had a further question when I was recognized.
Okay, just one, just one second. Mr. Magno, you're saying, clear for the record, there's nothing on her property?
Correct. And, and, and on the screen, and you could see the right-of-way, and you could see the turnaround is within the right-of-way lines. And I'd like to add, this is important because it was, it was already brought up. The town wants the turnaround because we don't want to encourage people to drive on the gravel where the intersection goes into a county highway, because that's not paved, and that's not a safe way to enter the highway. So that's why the turnaround is there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lyons, are you there? Do you agree, your testimony is that you're in the right-of-way, and you're not going on Mrs. Leeds' property?
That's correct. And, I mean, if I could, just one other point. You talked about the curve that was showing something on her property at the intersection of Cedar Bridge and Vine? That was just a stray, that right, what Ally's pointing to? That's just a stray drafting error. It has nothing to do with anything.
Okay, so it will not be on her property? Let's be simple.
There's no work proposed on that corner at all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, now, any board, what, Mr. Jackson?
I think Ms. Leeds had two points, though. She says that that's on her property, and, you know, I can see why I could believe that that's her property, because it's unimproved, and who knows where the property line is. And I believe what she's referencing, if we could put that screen back up, and I could be wrong, and it's a little bit of a disadvantage because she can't see this content. But I see a similar type of turnaround. As you look at the picture to the left, which would probably be on her property. She has two points. She says that there's a turnaround right there. Why do you have to have another one so close to the intersection? And therefore, it's going to disrupt my property, and it's gonna disrupt me, and I don't want it there. And it's unnecessary, because there's already one there in the right-of-way. So I think her, she actually was making two.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is Adam Pfeffer. I just called it up on what Mr. Jackson indicated. And everything I said before, we are doing no work on Mrs. Leeds' property. The hammerhead was a request by the township. We're happy to put it in, or we're happy not to do it. We're happy to use the other turnaround. Bottom line is, we are indifferent. Nothing is changing on this application. It's all, everything is what we're seeing. We're not touching anybody's property but our own. If the board requires to put the hammerhead in, we'll put it in. If the board says, don't put it in, we won't put it in. We're good either way.
Okay, I think that we should leave up to the township engineer, if they feel that it's necessary.
I agree, Mr. Herschel. And I mean, the other catch to that is that, understand, the other turnaround is there because that's what happened first. DPW is gonna want this second turnaround up further because they're gonna be collecting trash from these, this new duplex that's going.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Ally, I just sent you an email. Could you pull it up and put it up for the, for the group? Okay, so this is a screenshot from Google Earth. I don't understand, it appears that the road, from whatever that road at a 90-degree angle is, all the way to James is fully improved. Then, as you go from this intersection to Cedar Bridge, it's kind of half-improved. If you look at the very top of the screenshot, you'll see the hammerhead. So, you know, Vine Street has always been a mystery to me. I thought at one point it had environmental sensitivities or something, but apparently, there's not. Can somebody on, of our professionals, explain why is it that Vine has never been fully developed? And why don't we just develop, make the road that we're talking about putting a hammerhead in, why don't we just finish the thing? And make it a real road, like it goes from, to the James Street exit? And why is the gravel on the entrance of Cedar Bridge? Why is that not being paved? I'm showing my ignorance, I'm sure there's some history here, but I think it would be certainly useful for me and maybe some other board members.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Lyons is ready to address those questions, but I will also just point out that those lands that are on the other side have not come before the board with an application. So just like we're putting in our half of the street, they would have to at their point. But, Mr. Lyons, if you can, just address Mr. Stern's question?
Hold on one second, if I may, I want to understand there, because we can require a half-width in front of the property being developed. Is that, I, is that what's being done here, Mr. Magno, a half-width? I see the lines, and I see proposed education. And what the board has required is what Mr. Stern has asked. They improve the half-width in front of their property.
I think, I think it's existing, you know?
That, that is correct, Mr. Jackson. There is some history to Vine, like I said. I recall the earlier subdivision to the south, where it intersects Elm. And there is actually a plan for Vine that goes all the way through. However, as, as I believe Mr. Pfeffer said, the lots on the corner and on the other side have not been proposed for development, and the township has not pursued completing Vine to Cedar Bridge Avenue. So that's why it's where it is today. In order to finish it, it either have to be on behalf of the township with a future project that would have to be approved by the county, because you're intersecting a county road, or development of the, of the corner lot on the southwest side of the intersection, or some of the lots on the east side. That would, that would be, would be completed out to Cedar Bridge.
Yeah, Dave, I think eventually, when it does get completed, the, we don't, we won't need this hammerhead.
That is correct, and let me point out that the hammerhead, that's pavement that'll be done, that will have to be done later. Because it'll exist.
Good, okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I could ask to follow a question. Am I mistaken in my recollection that that portion of the Cedar Bridge development has environmental restrictions, and therefore, may never be developed? Or am I thinking of a different piece of this?
I think you're correct, Mr. Stern. As you go east, there are wetlands, and I'm not sure if the front of Vine could be developed on the east side.
You're not sure that it could be developed?
Correct.
Right, that's my recollection as well. Therefore, if the proposition, the supposition is we're only building half a road because one day, the trees across the way are gonna be knocked down, and will have other homes being built, and that will require that future developer to put in the other half of the road, that may be a false assumption. So if we're ever gonna have a real road that, I don't know, fire trucks and garbage trucks can go down easily, now may be the time to actually build the whole road.
Well, the right-of-way is extra wide here, and even though the, the half-width is actually, goes past the center line, so they do get the required width from RSIS standards.
So why did, why did, why did this board, when you go a little bit further to the south, when we developed, when those townhouses were put in, apparently, the board felt it was important that we have a full-width road?
No, no.
I'm looking at it, but tell me, please.
Okay.
Dave, Mr. Lyons, yeah, Mr. Lyons, we have to wrap it up, let's go.
I was, three duplexes on the west side of the road. There was no street there in, on Vine at all. It was just a gravel road that people traveled. The board required us to improve from Elm, as, as Dave said, down to the north of the property line of the three duplexes, and provide that little turnaround that does not go on to anybody else's property. That's completely within the right-of-way. Okay? So, and they only required a half a width. So you can see on, where the pavement is, it's very clear. There's a perfectly straight line that runs 24 feet off the curb line so that you had two conforming 12-foot lanes with a turnaround. The property on the opposite side of the street from the duplexes, which Mrs. Leeds owns, is developable. It was not part of the Cedar Bridge Development Corporation back in 2000. That's her property. She can someday come in or sell it, and someone else can come in and develop that lot. That had nothing to do with Cedar Bridge.
Right, Mr. Lyons?
It's all Cedar.
Okay, go ahead.
On the other side of her property, going east, it's all township property. It's all protected by conservation easements, so nothing can get built there. But this was private property owned by, I believe, Mrs. Leeds at the time.
So on the south side, south of, what's it called, Elm? Why is that road double-wide?
That road, for whatever reason, the board, maybe that was the zoning board approved that. Because I think it only goes another 100 feet to one or two duplexes, and then that road's done. From there down, it's all environmentally sensitive, wetlands, there's streams, there's marsh, there's whatever. So there's a big, there's probably a few hundred feet between the paved road on the bottom, down to Pine Street.
I see that.
And you need environmental permits from the DEP to do that. And, you know?
You need environmental permits from the DEP to do what?
To widen the road, to pave those.
To fill and pave the road.
So are you gonna need environmental permit to do your hammerhead?
No, there's no wetlands by our property.
Oh, so you're saying there's wetlands to the south, but no wetlands to the north?
Right. So the north is all high and dry, to the south is wetland.
Okay, that explains the difference.
Okay.
Lyons, that was very helpful.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson, are you there? Mr. Jackson, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Basically, basically, we hear from both engineers, township engineer, and from Mr. Lyons, nothing has changed. I think, it was a misconception, where she thinks that we're going on her property, but the testimony is that nobody's going on her property, and the township engineer confirmed it. I don't think technically we need another motion over here. I think the original motion stands.
Well, let's hear from Ms. Leeds, because we have to unmute her and hear what she has to say. We also got some comments from the public, and we have to figure out what we're going to do with that. But let's hear from Ms. Leeds first. Can we unmute her?
She's been...
Hello?
Okay, Ms. Leeds.
Hello?
Yes, I'd like to give you an opportunity to respond to everything that's been said so far.
I have the right to respond?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know what, I couldn't hear everything. What was the outcome?
The outcome? They're not doing anything on your property.
They're not gonna put this turnaround, this second turnaround here?
The second turnaround is not on your property. Those confirmed it.
It is on my property.
Okay.
It is on my property. I don't want it there, it's on my property. I have, I have the plan for it, and everything else. It goes into my property.
Well, Ms. Leeds, what, the township, or the board engineer and the surveys indicate that it's actually in the public right-of-way, that it joins your property? So the board is going to...
It's in the public right-of-way, and it's into my property. And why would you need two turnarounds 50 feet from each other?
Well, that's a different issue. Let's go one at a time. If it's on your property, that's not what the board, the board is not approving anything on your property.
We can't, we can't, we can't.
No, I'm discussing two turnarounds. Why do you need them 50 feet apart? And, and the resident, the governing party, I don't have the name of it right in front of me that I mentioned in my talk.
Resident, right, I'm sorry, right, well...
Yeah, right.
Mr. Lyons?
Their standards say that you only need a turnaround when the turnaround leads to a dead end. And that first turnaround leads to Cedar Bridge Avenue, which is not a dead end. So you're going against the standards of that federal, or whatever it is, law?
Well, I'm...
You cannot do that.
We have to await a final vote, but what I'm hearing from the chairman, and from the board engineer, is that this configuration was preferable to having the one hammerhead, because then the garbage trucks in front of the two, in front of the two units that were just approved, would have the ability to turn around. So...
There are, there are trucks there that go back and forth now. And they do everything very well.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, we have to move on.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I heard, I heard what she has to say.
All right.
This is harassment, this is harassment against me from Lakewood.
Okay.
They don't let me off of me now for 20 years.
Okay. Ally, we...
I need, I need some help. I am not gonna agree to the second turnaround.
So she...
Right, because it's, it's lawfully illegal.
Okay, then you should retain it.
Chairman, I think we should offer her to retain a lawyer, if you think that's illegal.
Yes, she should retain an attorney. We have to continue, we're just going in circles. We confirmed that that's not on her property. The deed shows very clearly, Mr. Lyons, that we're not touching her property, right?
All right. So if I prove that you are, if I get, if I get a survey, and I prove that you are on my property, then what?
Then, then they can't build, then it's illegal for them. We're not giving them any approvals on that.
Mr. Herschel?
All right.
Yes.
All right, so can we read this, that I get, I get a survey? I have to have the right to do, to defend myself.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, this has gone on. The applicant has made his application. We've gone up, we've gotten over, you know, beyond. We've allowed them to reopen, so that all the comments come in. You have a testimony from both Glenn Lyons, the professional engineer on this application, indicating that there is no, no work being done on Mrs. Leeds' property. The township attorney has confirmed that he's in agreement with Mr. Lyons.
Township engineer.
Seventeen times that we're not touching Mrs. Leeds' property.
Mr. Pfeffer, I think, I think Mr. Herschel has already indicated that. Now, we have to draw a fine line here. We want to be polite and hear everybody's opinion, but it's also...
All right, you have to give...
Let me finish.
You have to give me your right to have...
Ally, please mute.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, I can't, I can't continue.
... where everybody has to agree to everything. At some point, you know, the gavel has to come down, and we have to move on. And Mr. Herschel, I think you announced that point. And Mr. Hersel, I think you announced that point. I, I want to just alert the board, uh, that I did receive an email while this was pending. And, um, let me see, uh. Ally, do you know, I, I have a handful here, but I saw someone come in.
No, I didn't get any.
Okay, they're all addressed to you, so.
Addressed to me?
Uh, I, I had filtered it by your name, so, um, this is from a Mark Becker. Did you get that?
Yeah, that's regarding a different application. That's 2419.
That's what threw me when it, when it came up. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, I'm closing it to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hersel.
Okay, uh, I, my personal opinion, I'm not an attorney. I don't think we need a motion. We, we just confirmed that nothing's on her property. The motion stands and I would like to continue. If she feels differently, I think Ms. Leeds should retain an attorney and come back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, I, I, I was sent a draft resolution on this. Um, as the board had boarded last month, I would just ask Mr. Jackson if there's any reason why we couldn't, uh, why the board couldn't act on the resolution, uh, tonight, um.
I believe Ms. McLeer had left, um, some blanks in it. Maybe she was going to add, um, Ms. Leeds' comments and then have the board act on that resolution.
That's correct. I'm sorry, Ally. I, I was just going to say I've had the resolution open on my screen. I've been updating it. Hi, Mr. Hersel, how are you?
He just snuck in like that. Okay, i- if the, if the draft is not updated, then I think we should wait till next week. And if Mrs. Leeds wants to get a, a survey, she can do it.
Mr. Hersel, just confirm that the draft is updated. I, I've been updating it.
If it's updated, then I, then we should confront. Hello?
All right, so Mr. Hersel said that there's been a, has that, has that resolution been circulated, Ms. Morris?
Yes, it's been in the long drive aside from whatever Ms. McLeer just added about Ms. Leeds' comments.
Okay, so that's been updated. Um, maybe at the end of the meeting, we could adopt that or we could now whatever the chairman's preference.
I would, I would recommend Ms. McLeer just put it on the screen.
Yes, I can do that. Good evening, everyone. Bear with me one moment. I'm just going to share my screen.
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I close it to the public. The only thing, to be fair to Mrs. Leeds, maybe we should give her a, a, a week that she could get a, a survey to show differently.
Uh, I'm putting my objection on the record. This is now the second time we've opened up this application. She had probably have time to go get any, any other survey. We've had two professionals confirm we're not doing anything on her property. If we are, then there's another avenue to deal with that. But we're not, and what happens next week when she doesn't have her survey completed? We're going to wait again for the vote? I mean, this is just not fair to the applicant. We've done everything we're supposed to do. We've given all the opportunities. She could have given that survey since last week.
Uh, Mr. Mr.
Through the chair, it's Levy Isaacson. I, I did not vote on this application at all. Adam, I think there's extenuating circumstances here. In a public forum, Adam, allow me for a second. This, this is not, this is not an open public forum. It's a little bit more difficult, especially Mrs. Leeds, sounds like she doesn't even have a computer. In, 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 in a proper setting, she would be, she would come forward to the public and say that her survey shows that it's on her property. I think you have to allow her that right of one more week to come and present a survey and every, however she's going to present it. And let's see if there is something being built on her property. It's, Adam, if you, we understand.
I, I understand those concerns and if there was, if there was something shown, but we're in the right of way. Just to be clear, what's being proposed is being requested and, and for the record, the applicant has already agreed. If, if you guys don't want the hammerhead, take the hammerhead away.
Yeah, but you, you send the, the township.
For the hammerhead. We're willing to do it. You don't want it, take it away. I'll do one better, Levy. I'll do one better. We'll agree to build right now without the hammerhead. Should Ms. Leeds show that it's, it's on her property, no problem. It's not going to get built. If it's not, the township wants it, we will build it. It has nothing to do with the application. You realize the hammerhead is on the township's property right of way.
Okay.
In the resolution.
Okay, Adam, let me, let me just see the rest of the board. Uh, Mr. Stern, are you ready to vote on it right now?
I think so.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, are you ready to vote on it?
Yes.
Yes, I'm also ready to vote on it. Mr. Sable, are you ready to vote on it?
Yeah.
Mr. Renner, are you ready to vote on it?
Mr. Renner's not voting on this.
He's not voting it. Okay, I, I, I'm closing to the public and I'm asking for a motion on this application. Okay, anybody who said they would.
I will move on this application to approve the application.
Who's that for the record? Mr. Sable?
Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Meyer, do we have a second?
Second.
The, Mr. Garfield, second roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Hersel?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved. Uh, uh, let's go on.
We have to decide on the resolution.
Okay, number two.
That's the motion for the resolution, Chair.
Yes, yes, well, yes, for the resolution. Okay, let's go on to number two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd emailed earlier that I have to go at seven and since it's 6:56, it takes any purpose of me saying any further. Do you have a quorum? Are you good to go?
We have a quorum as of now. Uh, one, two, yeah, we have a quorum. Uh, Mr. Renner, could you sit on number two? It's just an extension. Okay. Who's here for number, uh, Ally, could you announce number two, please?
Yes, this is SD 2185. It's, it's an extension of a minor subdivision on Netherwood Drive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bruce. I pulled up the original plans. It's a little hard to see on this version, but I chose this sheet because it shows the proposed sidewalk and trees. It is currently one lot. They are proposing this lot subdividing it into two. And as I said, there's curb sidewalk and trees along all sides.
Okay, and it's just an extension and.
It's just an extension of a previous approval.
Okay, so how long do they need? What do they ask for?
Mr. Flattery looks ready to provide testimony.
Okay, Mr. Flattery?
Uh, we're asking for our third and final one-year extension.
Okay, uh, so you have to be on the votes, Mr. Jackson?
You've been up to duty. You swear from testimony before the board with the truth, all truth, nothing but truth.
I do. Brian Flattery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. This, uh, property is on the corner of a county road and a township road. Uh, the applicant is asking for a third and final one-year extension.
Okay, do we have a motion to grant the extension? Anybody?
I'll vote.
I'm Sable.
We moved. And do we have a second?
Levy Isaacson, seconds.
Okay, all in favor to grant the waiver? No, the, the extension, no, let's make a roll call on this. It's an extension. A roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield? Mr. Stern? I'm sorry, Mr. Stern left. Mr. Sable?
Yeah.
Mr. Hersel?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to number three.
Third item on our agenda is SP 2419 for Nos De Vora. It's a major site plan for a school on Oak Street. Mr. Jackson, this is the one we've received a couple of emails on, starting with Mr. Zynas at the start of the meeting, questioning the notice and jurisdiction of the board because there's a hall shown on the plans.
Okay, uh, uh, I don't understand the question. It's a school and they make no hall on it, right?
Right.
Okay, so we always, we always voted on the, our lunchroom that's being used as a hall. It's not a self-standing hall.
Well, no one's ever really raised this issue. I think we had something similar to this last week unless it's the same one, then we never maybe got to it. But the argument is, is a pretty good one. Um, he says that, uh, a banquet hall has different demands, uh, different, uh, impositions on the neighbors and, and on the neighborhood. And, uh, the, the notice doesn't apprise the general public that a banquet facility is going to be present within, under the auspices of a school. I think.
Oh, so one second. You're, you're not, he's not questioning jurisdiction or which border goes to. He's just questioning that because the notice did not.
Right. You know, there's going to be banquets and, and the parking lot's going to be filled up till midnight, three nights a week, four nights a week.
Okay, that's, that, that's a different question. And, uh, that's, uh, that could be a deficiency in the notice.
Right, that's it, notice.
Okay, and what's your opinion? Should we ask them to come back next week? In, in, in abundance of caution?
I, I think if there's a, a hall on the property, I don't think, uh, the average citizen would know. They see an application for a school. Well, a school's a certain thing. But now all of a sudden there's banquet halls. I mean, we know there's banquet halls in Lakewood. It's like there, there's a school happens to be part of a banquet hall. Um, so it, it's, you know, I, I don't know if everybody would, uh, would, would get the idea. And it depends on whether you want to be conservative. The other side of the coin is, well, it's a school. That's what schools typically do. I don't know if, if everybody in society views it.
Okay, my, my opinion is that what, that's where I started. I can't, I can't talk about, uh, uh, the legality, but everybody knows that every school lunchroom gets rented out. And I think this property, if I'm looking on the agenda, is on Oak Street. I don't think any people live on Oak Street. I don't think, I don't think it's a residential area.
If, if it's your judgment that you think that that term in this community lets you know that there's going to be a school there, I'm sorry, that there's going to be a banquet hall there, then, then, you know, that's, that's the ruling. But my recommendation is that I, I think you should notice, uh, for a banquet hall. I don't know what we do on all our other ones. Um, this has never come up before, but putting that aside, I can see Mr. Pfeffer at the edge of his chair shaking his head. He's disgusted with me. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
This is no different than any other application the board has seen. This is first and foremost a school. We have noticed for a school. Uh, everyone's talking about what's going to happen on the site, but yet our professionals have not had the opportunity to provide the testimony for what's going to happen on this site. There's a hall that's going to be, there is a, there's a, a room that has a stage that is going to be used for a school and may ancillary, have other ancillary uses, uh, which might be for, for a hall at times. The first and foremost use is as a school and has always been accepted as an ancillary accessory use. Things that can be rented out, just like the public school does. Public school, you can go rent the, the school out right now.
I suppose it's not a lot different than, you know, you go to Point Pleasant Beach High School and it's a gym. Let's say it was a private school and you see a gym there. You say, well, I didn't know there was going to be basketball games, uh, four nights a week during the winter and there's going to be 300 people here and then there's going to be wrestling matches on Wednesday night. And I didn't know that, um, you know, this is going to be going till 10, 11 o'clock at night and all day Saturday. And then somebody'd say, well, it says it's school, it doesn't care today. Who would know? I thought the kids are going to play volleyball.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Jackson, historically, every single school in Lakewood has a hall.
That's your, my, my argument of what I just said is along the lines of what your process is. So, you know, is it, is it like a gym on, on a lot of schools?
Mr. Mr. Renner, you're the co-chair. What's your opinion?
All of a sudden, he wants my opinion.
I owe that. I asked him for your opinion too.
I, I, I personally, I would like to see the notice state that there's going to be an ancillary use of a, um, of a hall.
Okay.
It's an ancillary use to the school. I agree, but it should be noticed. I, you know, I don't want to make it as, as a new use, but that, that's my opinion. I mean, I'll go along with.
Okay, let me see. Mr. Sable, what's your opinion?
I, I, I'm looking at Terry's letter, page number three on the zoning. Terry is asking the question, testimony shall be provided regarding whether the large wedding hall is permitted to use. So somebody should answer, is this a permitted use? A large wedding hall is a permitted use in the zone or not?
We, we would love to give the testimony. We would love to give the testimony. We need our, our professionals sworn in and to start our application. We're happy to do that.
One, one, one second.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's a trickier question. The, uh, the question is whether what, you know, uses that are with the, under the umbrella of a, of a larger use, it, it depends on the fabric of the community. Um, like I gave the example of, uh, you know, where, say you have a, a parochial Catholic high school and they have a gym where they have basketball games. Well, that's normal, just like every other high school in the state. You know, maybe in Lakewood it's normal to have banquets in, in the, uh, in, in the, in the hall. Um, their testimony, we, we have the same issue with, uh, high schools that have dormitories. Where I think in a lot of communities, they say, no, their high schools generally don't have dormitories with them. I think it's like the exact opposite. And the case law says that what is an accessory use, uh, what is under the umbrella of the overall use is really a question of fact. It has to be developed after record and I think the applicant wants to be heard on that.
Okay, I, I, I just want to hear from the rest of the board. I don't want to waste the whole night. Uh.
Can we ask, can we ask Dave? He knows the zoning in, in township. Dave, is this zoning, is large wedding hall permitted?
One second, Mr. Sable speaking. Dave, you want to answer that?
You're muted.
Yeah, so the, the question is, I'm, what our letter was looking for is testimony. And I think, um, Mr. mentioned this, that the claim is that the wedding hall, in this case, is inside the school building. It's an ancillary use to the school. I believe that's going to be their testimony to clarify item one. I, I, I think the issue that Mr. Jackson is having is simply the notice doesn't mention the hall. And that's, that is only the, that's what the crux of the problem is. It's not, it's not really whether you're before the correct board. I think the testimony by Mr. Pfeffer has already confirmed that this is before the correct board.
Okay, so Mr. Sable, I'll ask you a question. Yes, Dave, Dave.
I just have a question.
Yes.
What is the, I'd say, what is the parking allowance at, at a school compared to a banquet hall? Back where you can have a lot more people.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, it, it, that, that is testimony. I, I think we should deal with the issue. Do we want them to renotice and come back in two weeks? Or we're willing to hear this today. What's your opinion, Mr. Garfield?
I think it should be put off until we get some answers.
Okay, Mr. Sable, what, what was your answer? Mr. Sable, are you there? I don't hear from him. Mr. Meyer, what do you feel? Should we go ahead or?
I think we should go ahead. I think, uh, as Mr. Jackson said, there's no difference between this and a school that has, uh, a gym, that there's basketball games in every night, there's wrestling matches, there's anything else. It's a part of the school.
Okay, that, that was my opinion. I just want to make sure we have the, the majority of the board who's willing to go along with it. Uh, Mr. Renner said we should push it off. Mr. Garfield, Dave, we should push it off.
I'm okay if, if the rest of the board wants to move forward. I'm okay going forward. I just think maybe in the future, they should, they should say a multi-purpose hall. It should say something.
Mr. Isaacson, are you still there?
I am still here.
What's your opinion?
Uh, my opinion is we should, uh, go forward, hear testimony and, um.
Okay, so that, that's what we're going to do. I think the majority of the board said we should go forward. Okay, so Mr. Mango, would you like to, Dave, would you like to go through the report? Uh, could you give Ally just two minutes to bring it up?
Okay, as we already discussed, this is a, uh, for a new school with a, uh, wedding hall in the building. Dark in here, so I better use glasses. Uh, so, um, it's a site that fronts, uh, Oak Street and it has, uh, it borders two other, uh.
The wrong letter.
Rightways on, on the east and west side. So it actually will have three branches. The only, uh, the only, uh, side is to the south where there's currently, uh, uh, wooded area before you get into residential area further south. And, uh, the project has some submission waivers that are needed. And we are basically okay with the submission waivers. Uh, a couple of things will be made, conditions of approval. Um, the, uh, the information in 200 feet can be granted, uh, it can be waived. Um, the, uh, the information in 200 feet can be granted, uh, it can be waived provided that the survey is updated to what is already built on, uh, I believe it's the Lambert Avenue side of the, uh, of the property. And the other thing, as a condition of approval, we would need complete plans and profiles for both Lambert and Caldwell avenues because they are public right of ways that are being improved for the project. If the board can make, uh, motions, the submission.
Do we have, do we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations?
Moved, moved, second, all in favor, I.
Okay, on to zoning.
Okay. Zoning, uh, I think Mr. Pfeffer's already given some testimony about how how this is going to work with a school being a permitted use and the wedding hall being, uh, ancillary, ancillary use to the school. Um, it does need, um, now, here here's the question, uh, whether we're really before the right board, is the building height. It's not clear on the plans what the building height is supposed to be. Uh, you're permitted 35 feet. And from the plans that we're looking at, it's 41 feet on three sides of the building. So, I don't know, yeah, we're going to need testimony on that as to how that, if the plans are going to be revised, how it's going to fit into the 35 feet.
If that's more than 10% over 35, that's a deal killer. We can't, we don't.
Right, exactly. That's why, that's why that needs to be clarified, to make sure we stay before this board. So, um, moving on to the other items, it does need, uh, front yard setback variance. Uh, because like I mentioned, it has three frontages. Uh, if the building is going to be 44 and a half feet from from both Caldwell Avenue and Lambert Avenue, where front yard setbacks of 50 feet are required. And the other variance that we need would be, uh, buffer relief on the south side, uh, which currently is undeveloped, but could be in the future. As far as, uh, design waivers, uh, it needs design waivers for the, uh, number of driveway intersections on Caldwell Lambert. But, uh, we do want to point, the majority of these, uh, intersections are one-way, which I believe is going to be the reason for the request, and they'll have to give testimony on that. And there is a, right now, with the way the plans are designed, is a partial, uh, design waiver from, uh, completing the sidewalk on Lam- Lambert and Caldwell Avenue. And really, the plans can be revised to simply eliminate that, uh, that design waiver by going to the terminus of the roads. And it's really not that much of a change from the existing plans. So, uh, that's what you have for the, uh, for the zoning and design waivers.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, turn over the applicant. Uh, I'm going to skip my preamble. We've already discussed this a lot. We'll jump right into it. I have two witnesses this evening. I have Brian Flannery to address any, uh, engineering or planning questions. And I have Scott Kendall to address any, um, any traffic concerns. At this time, if we can, first call on Brian Flannery, have him sworn in. And I would ask the board just to confirm that you accept him as an expert in the field. Thank you.
Mr. Flannery, where are your firm's testifying to give before the board the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, Licensed Professional Engineer, Professional Planner. As indicated, we have a, uh, application here tonight for a site plan for Benos Devora High School, which is a girls' high school.
I'm trying to, Brian, I'll make sure, Mr. Chairman, do you accept Mr. Mr. Flannery as an expert in the field?
I think by now we accept him already.
Just wanted for the record. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, so thi- this is a, uh, an existing girls' high school. Uh, it it's a, uh, a plan, uh, uh, on Oak Street in an area where there are a lot of schools. The township had many years ago designated, uh, the Oak Street corridor for schools and had sold a lot of property, uh, to private schools in this area. Uh, as indicated previously during discussion, it's not a residential area. We're we're surrounded by schools. Uh, if we go to Terry's report, the first item is, uh, with respect to the permitted use and the question of whether, uh, a large wedding hall is is a permitted use. And we're not proposing, uh, a a large wedding hall. We're proposing a school that has rooms that, uh, will be used for other purposes, similar to other schools. Uh, Base Tova, right across the street, uh, has a, uh, hall, uh, also, uh, as part of the school that was approved by the planning board probably 10 or 15 years ago, uh, as well as other schools that are, uh, approved with.
Brian, I just want to ask you one question before we go further. Assuming that it is a hall, do you have enough parking for it?
Yes, we do. The, we have 367 parking spaces. So the, uh, the, uh, if you take the whole area and and the plan is that, uh, some of it's going to be, uh, possibly for basketball, some of it's going to be, uh, for an auditorium, because it's used for a lot of things. But if if you just took the whole area, if they want to rent it out one night, the whole area, they have 16,290 square feet. The most stringent ordinance requirement we have for parking in Lakewood is for restaurants at 1 for 50 square feet. Uh, we're providing 1 per 44 square feet, uh, well in excess of that. Uh, 367 parking spaces is, uh, more than Lake Terrace has, uh, and they have a larger facility. So, uh, when you look at what's being proposed, uh, the parking accommodates, uh, what's there.
Okay.
Three, um, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I I think this was, uh, Mr. Table's question and maybe another board member. Um, what do you hang your hat on to say that this use of a banquet hall is permitted here? Are are banquet halls expressly permitted anywhere else? Is it expressly permitted here? Are you trying to, uh?
Banquet banquet halls are not expressly permitted, but this is the, uh, rooms in the school are accessory uses to the school. Uh, and, uh, as anyone who's been in Lakewood a long time knows, uh, schools rent out their rooms, the private schools as well as public schools, as well as private schools and public schools in in any municipality that I've been in. So, uh, my testimony is that it's an accessory use to the school.
All right, please proceed.
Okay, so, uh.
Chairman, can I ask the question?
Yeah, of course.
I have a question. I have nothing against the school and nothing against the banquet hall, but you're telling us that this, uh, uh, rooms are accessories, uh, to the to the school. I don't think a school needs a chopper room and a and 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 a yichad room, where it's clearly said in the plan, a family suite, family suite, chopper room. I I I don't think a school where teachers Yiddish and English is required to have a chopper room.
Well, the, those are multi-purpose rooms, uh, in the, on the basement level. And the architect, uh, labeled them in a fashion which would indicate the greatest, uh, use and parking demand for it. So that when we came to the board and the board asked, uh, how much parking is going to be needed for this, which is typical of every school application that comes to the board. Uh, as we've been through many times before, the Lakewood ordinance provides for parking requirements for halls associated with a shul. Uh, and and that goes from.
Brian, you're not answering, Brian, you're not answering the question. You're not answering the question.
Well, I I I am answering the question. The architect labeled those so that the board members could see the most intense use that could be anticipated for this site. Those rooms will be used for other functions additionally, but the architect labeled them as the most intense use that could be, uh, accommodated in the basement so that the board would have an understanding of the parking demand that's required, which is the usual conversation that occurs when a school comes in. Okay, you have a a multi-purpose room, you have an area that can be rented out. How much parking can we anticipate so that you can accommodate the parking, uh, and not adversely impact your neighbors?
Okay, Mr. Sable, okay, Mr. Sable. Uh, we may have to change the ordinance and be more specific about halls and schools, which I agree. I think we should do, we should do it. I spoke to the mayor about that. But I think as of now, every school in Lakewood has a hall. And as long as, like I asked Brian, if he's giving me enough parking more than any other hall, then on my personal opinion, we should go forward.
Mr. Chairman, I I have nothing against this, I have nothing against the the ballroom over here. And I think they have a nice parking and it's a nice, very nice site. But saying that a yichad room and and a chopper is accessory to the school, I don't think that's the right thing to say.
I I I, I I I agree with you.
That's false comment on 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 behalf of a professional.
I think we can maybe call it not an accessory use to a school, but maybe like, uh, a financial aspect for the school. That's where the school makes money.
Maybe that would be more appropriate, maybe. But to say that the kids need this and it would be benefit to the school, educational part.
Unless, unless, unless they, unless the the room is a multi, it could be used for playing ball also, like a gym.
Uh, we we all know there's going to be a banquet hall and all the board members know, and it may be nothing wrong with that. But to say that this is for the kid, I think you should retract that comment because that's a false comment, in my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dave.
I I have a question, not a question, but most built, uh, built rooms of this size banquet room is a limit is set to how many people can attend it in this, in this size, which would affect the parking spots. So we would know what the maximum would be based on the, uh, people in the building.
Okay, so Dave, I think Mr. Flannery addressed it originally, said the most stringent parking for a restaurant is 1 out of 1 for 50 square feet. And I think he testified to giving 1 out of 45 or 44 square feet.
One per every 44 square feet.
So you're giving more than the most stringent ordinance that we have on the record.
Uh, I, yeah, I don't know how many people.
Okay, that 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 I think is up to the fire marshal to say how many people could fit into the building.
Right.
But I I I don't think that even if they make a hall, they're asking any variance on parking. They have ample parking, more than any other one. Okay, with that, Mr. Flannery, would you like to continue?
Yes, so the second comment, uh, in, uh, the RVE report is with respect to the building height. Uh, and the building height per the UVO is defined as the vertical dimension measured from the average elevation of the finished lot grade at the front of the building. And that's the important part, at the front of the building, because Dave has testified that it's 41 feet high on three sides. But the building height is measured at the front of the building to the highest point of the roof deck, to the deck line of a mansard roof, and to the average height between the plate and the ridge of a hip or gamble roof. So in this particular case, uh, the, uh, average grade at the front of the building is 88.65 feet. Uh, and the, uh, building height is 41 feet from the first floor, uh, from the, uh, finished floor on the first floor level, uh, which is higher than the average grade. Uh, based on the average grade at the front of the building at 88.65 feet, the height of this building, as defined in the UVO, is 35 feet. So, uh, A, we don't even need a bulk variance for the height, and and B, we're at the right board.
Okay.
Certainly, that, those details can be provided, uh, and and documented, uh, during resolution compliance if the board acts favorably. I'd be happy to run through all those numbers with you. It it's it's a very tedious, uh, mathematical, uh, calculation.
Okay. Dave, do you, do you accept that?
Yes, I'm, I just wanted to make sure that.
Okay.
Your intentions were so that we we knew it was before the correct board or we.
Okay.
Act on it, or no variance.
Okay, thank you. So Brian, continue on. Any other?
The 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 next variance, which is the, uh, variance that we do need is for a front yard setback to Caldwell. Uh, we've proposed 45.07 feet, uh, where 50 feet is required. Uh, I'm sure the board is familiar that at the last master plan, uh, the board decided that setbacks for schools should be further than, uh, typical setbacks. In the R10 zone, the front setback, it, that's required for anything except the school is 30 feet. Uh, here, we're asking for 45 feet, which is, uh, less than the 50 feet required by the ordinance. Uh, but that's a C2 variance, uh, which I will provide my testimony and my professional opinion for why, uh, that makes sense, especially in this location. If this was a different R10A location where it was surrounded by houses, um, that my my testimony would be different and and the application would be different. But this is in a, uh, in an area that's developing with schools. The property to the rear of us that's indicated may be, uh, developed in the future is owned by the township. Uh, and just like the other property that's been owned by the township in this area, uh, that the township has sold, they've sold to schools because Lakewood has a need for the schools, which is an inherently beneficial use. Uh, the, uh, other relief that we need is from buffers, a 20-foot buffer is required from a residential use or district. Uh, and again, we're surrounded, uh, by, uh, the roads. Uh, so it's, uh, providing a buffer would would not accomplish anything. And it's my opinion that we've complied with the intent of the ordinance. So looking at the, uh, the master plan of 2017, the vision statement on page seven says encourage growth and development in appropriate locations consistent with established land uses. And and that's what's being done here. The established land uses schools, uh, as facilitated by the township, uh, governing body. Uh, it it also says on the same, uh, page, provide sufficient educational, recreational and communist, community facilities to meet future needs. And and that's what's being accomplished here. Uh, uh, the same master plan on page 10, under community facility strategies. Uh, four is to continue to support the development of private schools in the township of Lakewood, which the governing body has done and this application does. The municipal land use law, NJSA 40,55D2, under purpose of the act. A is encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does that. Um, so this is a C2 variance. Um, and for the C2 variance, we need to show it relates to a specific piece of property. This is a property in in an undeveloped area of Lakewood, one of the few remaining undeveloped areas of Lakewood, uh, which development has been directed towards schools. The purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which I testified to. Uh, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And and the only variance is, uh, a 45 foot instead of a 50 foot setback. Um, uh, and and if you look at the.
Which is the minimum, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I and I also wanted to say, in in respect to what's been provided for this school, you can see where there's a whole line of busing allowed in front, the deliveries are in the back. The, it it has been well laid out so that it it doesn't adversely impact any of the neighbors. Uh, and and that's where the the relief, uh, that we're asking. Uh, we have to show that it will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And it's certainly my testimony that that does this. And then we need to show that the detriment, the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment. My testimony is there is no detrimental relief that's being, uh, requested, as the chairman knew, I would say, is the minimus. And and the benefits are providing this use, which is, uh, requested in the, uh, in the master plan and and certainly the the governing body, uh, also, uh, understands the need for the.
Brian, is there anything in Terry or Dave's report that you don't agree with?
Um. Uh, no, we will, we will satisfy, uh, all of the the comments in the report.
Do you explain about the height, how this is in the D height variance?
No, it's it's not. The the UVO defines height as the distance from the roof to the average front grade, uh, the average grade along the front of the building. Uh, and the average grade along the front of the building is higher than the three sides where the RVE report points out that, uh, there was a, uh, a building height. There's a height greater than, uh, 35 feet. But the building height, as defined by the ordinance, is in the front of the building. The average height, that average height to the roof is 35 feet, which complies with the order.
Okay, I I asked Dave if he agreed with it originally.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any board members have any questions for Mr. Flannery?
Yes, I have a question. You can go to, it's time table. We can go to design, design waiver number two. Please. If you can show us on the map where that, where that, where that is.
It it's in the, it's in the very back of the building. It, it's in, it's in the very back of the building. The sidewalk, we run sidewalk all across the front. Sidewalk all the way up both sides up to the building. Connect the, the.
Brian, we cannot hear.
Sidewalk along the road with the sidewalk on the front and sides of the building. But there's a little turns. There's a couple of small pieces of sidewalk.
Brian, we cannot hear.
Turns that it's a variance, no sense. It's not going to grant that.
It's probably the storm. I think we're losing him.
Okay, one second. He's like, Brian, are you back?
My thing's not muted.
Okay, you're back. How much is that, that area?
I hear you good and I'm, I'm made, okay.
How much is that area that you don't want, you're asking for variance, a waiver and budding sidewalks?
I, 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 while we're asking, it looks like if added, what the board wants to say, it's silly sidewalk. It's, it's little sidewalk in places that nobody's.
We are unable to hear the professional testimony.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Favor.
The applicant, if the board would like, if the board would like, the applicant will put the sidewalk in.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't, doesn't pay to fight. That's why I ask if it's a small area.
We're, we're withdrawing that request of that waiver.
Okay, any, any other questions? Any board members have any other questions?
I have another.
Okay, one second, one second. Mr. Flannery, can you call, could you call in or log back in again?
I, I had muted Brian, just so he's aware. Brian, you're breaking up really bad. We can't hear you.
I, I noticed I. Do you hear me now?
Now I hear you. I heard you. Brian, are you speaking? No. Brian, you want to call in on your phone? Brian, do you hear me? Could you call in on your phone?
I wait. Yep. I hear you calling in.
Okay.
What's the number?
911.
Hold on. I will text it to you.
Brian, you should save it from last time.
I, I thought we were past that. I didn't, didn't know I was going to get a storm.
It's public information, so I'm sharing it on my screen here.
Okay. Brian, do you see it? Just shake your head.
He's gonna need, he's gonna need ID also, a, a personal ID number.
Yeah, the meeting number's here on my screen as well. It's, it's just from the email. It's the information that's included all the, included in all the public notices.
No, but he's gonna need a special code. I think he pressed one and then after all this, you have to put a member access number.
He's, he's called in before, so he should be able to do it using this information.
We'll find out. I hope so.
It's probably so small on my screen. I don't know if he can read it. I seem smirking. Can't make it bigger. It's an email.
Brian needs glasses.
Like the early days of this.
Brian, is that you?
No, he's still dialing. He's, he's saying something, but he's pointing at his phone and motioning and he's working on it.
Brian, you need a new phone. Ally, does it pay for him to log out of his computer, log back in again? Would that help?
I don't know. It may just be internet issues with the storm.
He could go to Gillian's parents' house with her.
Exactly. My electricity just went back on at my own house. So good to think I'm here.
Well, well, isn't Brian Jackson in, you know, his past civilization? Isn't that maybe the issue here?
Okay.
Chairman, while Brian's working on this, I believe after this application, we're going to lose our quorum. I believe you and Mr. Isaacson and Mr. Renner all cannot stay.
Okay. Okay, so I think we should table it right now while Brian logs on. Can you announce that number four, SP2416, will be heard on that?
Can Mr. Jackson do it? Because if I pull up the agenda, it's going to cover up the number that Brian's looking at.
Mr. Jackson, are you there? Or I'll announce it.
Yes, I, I, I'm here. I was just, somebody unmuted me and muted me. I have, so it's number four and five will be adjourning?
Number five, Sam D'Satoro was adjourned already. It's only number four.
And, and the correspondence.
And the correspondence.
What date are we adjourning it to?
Oh, boy.
They say I'm unmuted.
Hey, you want to hear me? What date are we adjourning it?
Um, I mean, our next agenda is. Yes, hold on just a minute, Brian. We started a side conversation. Our next agendas are completely overloaded. Realistically, June 29th is reasonable for these to be heard, but I don't know if you want to push them that far.
Did you say June 29th? Ally, did you say June 29th?
I did, but I'm looking for some feedback from the board.
Can I speak? Can I speak? Because these two are both my applications.
Okay.
First of all, the correspondence matter will take exactly one minute.
Yeah, I don't know if we can have a quorum at this point.
Can we do it now? It's literally a one-minute application.
No, we're, we're holding a mill of application. That's not fair. I want to finish this one.
Here, here's the list for, this isn't the agendas. It's harder to see. But this is how busy June 15th and June 22nd are with full, full applications, five on each one.
But wouldn't these go before the ones that were scheduled for June 15th since they're getting pushed from today?
Well, a number of these have already been carried from June 1st. And they're schools.
Ally, I would say maybe try to put them on the 15th and if we don't reach it, they'll, they'll go to, I don't know, the 22nd.
Okay.
We'll put it on the agenda. If you, I don't think we'll reach it, but we'll try to. Okay, so, so, Mr. Jackson, you want to make that announcement? You're talking, Mr. Jackson, I see your lips moving, but I don't hear you.
Like a pink foot. You can't hear me either?
Now I hear you.
Like a pink foot. My lips move, but you can't. And so we're moving to June 15th, that matters?
Uh, I don't think we'll be heard. We move to June 15th and if we have to carry it, then we'll carry it further.
Okay, so members of the public be advised, number four on tonight's calendar, SP2416, that 650 James Street LLC has been adjourned, will be heard on June 15th, 2021. 2289, the Shiva Ohura Yehuda has been adjourned or likewise be heard from June 15th, 2021, 6 o'clock, under this electronic format.
Okay, Brian.
Was everyone, was everyone able to hear that? I think we had some interference from other lines. Should we have him say it again? Or was it just me who couldn't hear?
I couldn't hear it, so it was not clear.
I couldn't hear it either.
All right, let's mute everyone and you'll have to announce it again, John. I'm sorry.
Okay, let me just make sure I'm not muted. All right, there we go. Mr. Hurst.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jackson, you're breaking up.
All right.
So. Ally, you want to announce it or I'll announce it?
I hear you fine. Why don't you announce it? Gillian, do you want to try it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the agenda to, to make sure I'm saying the right numbers. Bear with me for one second.
Or I'll just do it if you want. Ally has it up.
Ally has it up here, okay. Um, so, okay, so I'll just, I'll just make the announcement. This is Gillian McClear from Kinketer Jackson McQueenian Wells. Members of the public advised that SP2416, 650 James Street LLC is hereby being adjourned with no further public notice needed to our, I'm sorry, Ally, you said the, the June 15th hearing? It's being adjourned to the June 15th, 2021 hearing, again with no further public notice needed. And also, under correspondence, SP2289, Yeshiva Ohura Yehuda is also being carried with no further public notice needed to the June 15th, 2021 hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be time to go back to a regular forum, huh? You're unmuted, Mr. Hertzler.
I'm, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted.
You were. I just unmuted you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, Brian, are you there?
He probably called in. Let me unmute the phones that called in. Uh, okay, Brian.
Don, don't list the number.
Uh, 0196 is me.
You're good.
Okay, Mr. Sable was, had a question for you, Brian. Mr. Sable, are you there? Ally, this is getting me the weather.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, could you, you had a second question for Brian? Oh, no.
Small portion in the back. Can we call you item number four? Public turnaround that's not been designed. Where, where is that? At the end, all the way to the end?
Yes.
On both sides?
We don't feel that a turnaround is needed because you can pull right behind the building.
Very true. Is that the one-way, correct? And if somebody wants to go back up that street, if somebody went down and they don't want to go behind the building if there's traffic or if there's a truck unloading over there?
Well, if, if they're, if they're already. The same as it is behind any building where, where it's one-way. If, if it's before they get in the building, they have the opportunity to turn and or do a K-turn.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I said, if they're in the one-way, they have the same problem that you would behind any building where it's one-way, that they're going to have to wait. If they're not behind the building in the one-way and they're in the right-of-way, they have the availability to make a K-turn in the hammerhead portion of the design.
Okay, so is Lampert a one-way or is it a two-way?
The pub, the public streets are both two-way. The only thing that's one-way is the driveway behind the building.
And, and the school bus loading?
Yes, and the bus. Correct.
Right, so if somebody goes down Caldwell, Lampert, that street all the way to the end, and then there's a school bus or truck loading, he has to be able to turn around?
Well, theoretically, he would see that occurring and he can go into the driveway and, and turn around at that point or make a K-turn on the street.
How wide is the street?
It's a standard Lakewood 32-foot wide carton.
Okay, so you have plenty of room to make a K-turn?
Yes.
Okay.
And they recommend, number five recommends a, some sort of, some side of, some type of barrier. Those are at the end?
At, at the end, right, because it's a dead end and we will provide whatever CPW says is appropriate.
Okay, what's going on with the other side of this, of Caldwell and Lampert regarding sidewalk? On the other side, not in the side of the subject property, the other side of it.
As, as you can see on the plan, there's some existing sidewalk from the sites that have developed. We're only proposing sidewalk on our side.
Can we legally require you to do this or this is not your property?
But my opinion is that would be an off-site improvement, which would not be appropriate.
I don't think we have a, okay.
Can we ask Dave or, or John what their legal jurisdiction of the board or what the code?
You broke up a little. What exactly do you want?
The sidewalks on the second side of the street.
Can we require them or can we not require them?
John, I believe Mr. Sable's asking for sidewalks that are abutting, not our property, across the street, the neighbor's property, which we don't have jurisdiction to, to install.
Are they improving the full, are there full-width roads there now? I saw the aerial superimposed before. There's nothing there, right? I don't know.
Are you guys improving?
There's a case that says you're only supposed to make a developer like this improve their side of the street.
That's how we're doing it till now.
Yeah.
Is the applicant only improving the, their part of the street or the full?
Their half of the street. Their half of the street. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. That's what I was trying to figure out.
We're providing full width, but we're not providing sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Can we request at least meandering, please? Not, if it's too much money, the concrete.
I think it would be an upset of property for a school.
It's not our property. The, the right-of-way is a little bit different because it's the township-owned. But you're talking about side, meandering paths or sidewalks. That goes on to the neighboring property owners. We don't have authority to go on to. It also raises additional issues with regard to bonding, off-site improvements that are not ours. It's nothing to do with this application. And I, I think it's inappropriate and I don't think that there's a just, a legal justification to do it as well.
How about this argument? Mr. Flannery said he's looking for variances under C2 where the benefits of the application substantially outweigh the detriment. Maybe one of the benefits of this application that could scale would be that they would provide sidewalks on the other side of the street.
Yeah, but Mr. Jack, how could he do it if it's not his property?
They are the same owner. Bruno's the voter.
I'm just pointing it out there, Mr. Hertzler. I don't get the vote.
Bruno's the voter owns both properties.
Okay.
Well, and the sidewalk would fit between the curb and the property line. It's still within the right-of-way.
Right, correct.
And, and the reason for my request is because we do have, and you have a design, I believe it's a design waiver, because you have too many driveway access. So this will make it a long way for pedestrians to walk without any crosswalk, without any, any driveway in and out. That's the justification.
Okay, would the applicant agree to make the sidewalks?
Thank you very much. And last question, is there any way we can make Caldwell a one-way out?
Who, who agreed to do sidewalks? I'm sorry.
I'm asking a question of the applicant who would agree to it. I'm not saying yes.
There is, there are some issues with regard to grading. You know, I, I have to take a little, let's proceed with the other questions and we'll get back to this one item.
Okay, because if the applicant agrees, we're off to, we're off to work. Final question, Mr. Sable.
Can we do Caldwell, can we do Caldwell one-way out? The reason is because we have a lot of buses coming in because they're going in one-way. Well, cold, slowly. Lampert is a two-way. Buses and trucks will, will have to go in from Lampert. Am I right? Uh, yeah. Buses and trucks going through Lampert, they end up going into a one-way street in front of the school. I think the plan that you're showing now is not the same as we have. No, we have the same, yeah. So they go into Lampert, they end up forcibly, forcefully going into a one-way, either through a school or the, or trucks. They have to go back to Caldwell. Can we make that into a one-way? So.
That was the township decision? And I, I don't think it makes sense because there's other property owners. And if the road gets extended further south, it, it, it creates a situation. But if the board feels that's appropriate, we would make the recommendation to the governing body. And if they agree to it, it would be a one-way.
Okay, my, my question is, could we, could we? Could we read on this one comment is, we do have Scott Kennel, who would deal in traffic. He might be able to give some extra insight. Even I know Brian is an expert also in, in traffic. But since Scott's here, we'll try and add him as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other board members have any other questions for Mr. Flannery? You say none? Well, Mr. Kennel, do you have anything to add?
We have to have Mr. Kennel sworn in.
Yes.
You swear from testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do. Scott Kennel with McDonough and Reyes Associates qualifies as a traffic expert.
Okay, so zero in what they asked about Mr. Kennel.
Chairman, and you accept Mr. Kennel as an expert?
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
As far as Caldwell is concerned, I follow up on Brian's comment that there's other properties along the length of Caldwell that would benefit from that being a two-way traffic flow, but obviously you can defer to the mayor and council, but in my opinion, it should be two-way, just because of providing full access to any other properties that could develop along Caldwell.
I agree with that. Okay.
I think that the property next door to it came in front of the board recently, we gave them the approval, and they were not supposed, we didn't make them finish Caldwell. So I don't think they're going to need it. Maybe further down on the road? I think it's a good idea, you've got some buses and trucks, everybody's getting stuck in there with cars. I don't think it's a good idea. I think one-way in and out, we have it by the fountain bowl, works a lot better when it's one-way in, one-way out. The Hassan Hall, the big hall.
Okay.
If I can just add, it's my opinion, I know there was a comment about the number of driveways, but the site has been designed, in my opinion, very well, where it enables to segregate the bus traffic, passenger vehicle traffic, and delivery vehicles. And typically, delivery vehicles are not occurring when schools are starting or dismissal times. But you also have to look at the fact that the parking lot between the school building and Oak Street also has an access directly to Oak Street, and they also have access to Lampert and Caldwell to better distribute traffic. So, again, not everybody's going to be exiting out only to Caldwell. They have access directly to Oak Street and access to Lampert as well, just for the board's benefit.
Okay.
Maybe we should require, maybe we should do the one-way, other-way around, towards Lampert. Over there, we know there's less opportunity, and make it one-way out that way. If there's going to be another school more on Caldwell, there's just going to be trucks and buses and buses and trucks, everybody forcibly to going out one-way. Can we revise the one-way, go the other way?
In my opinion, Lampert needs to be two-way because you have the other, you have the school that's on the west side of Lampert that needs access to Oak Street. So, again, the fact that we have multiple driveways and access points helps to distribute traffic from this site, but I think creating a one-way traffic pattern on either Lampert or Caldwell are going to have negative impacts on other properties.
And I do agree with you that this is a very, very nice application. The parking lot is beautiful, the sidewalk, you're just trying to figure out not to have that many buses and trucks, deliveries, or, of course, it's going to be perfect, but not for commercial and buses. So if there's a way we can fix that, it'll be great, and if we cannot, we'll go along with it.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open it up to the public. Ally, is there anybody in the public who would like to be heard on this application?
John, we receive, is John still here? Oh, yeah, we lost his video. We did receive a couple, multiple emails from Mr. Zynus and the other public commenter who had questions about the hall. I don't know if those additional comments should be read in, or if they're just repeating what was already summarized by you.
I think we should read the new comments.
Okay.
So I have a handful at the top of my screen, Ally, do you want to put them up? What you have here?
Yeah, which one are you starting with?
Well, I have them, I'm looking at the screen.
Okay, hold on just a minute. I'll start with...
I picked up my email here. Do it that way, where you...
I have five comments in total, let me just open them all up. And then we can just take them in order of receipt. These are all also available on the public drive. I have uploaded them while we were in our meeting. This is the first from Mr. Zynus.
All right, he mentioned about the banquet hall. That's from Mr. Vining, and he, I think I recited this at the last meeting, and we went through that issue. These are the issues that we discussed earlier. I basically outlined what Mr. Zynus's position on that.
Okay. Okay, next.
One thing I want to point out that he says, and there was another comment, he says, "Not all schools have wedding halls, therefore they should mention it." That goes to...
I think, I think, I think we agree, the future notice is shown up.
All right, we have another one from Mr. Zynus. Some schools he has built have banquet halls and some do not. Accordingly, since some include wedding halls, this applicant should clearly state their notice. To Mr. Herzl's point, there's no residential neighborhoods on Oak. Remind, the planning board, when the infamous hotel was approved on Pine Street, there certainly were no neighbors within 200 feet, and still, the appellate division found that the notice needs to be legit, quote, unquote.
Okay.
This is from Robert Becker. He lives in the Vine Street area, wants to express his concern about the planning board application that we're hearing now. The notice says that the school is permitted in the OR10A. It says schools are permitted use, it's only half truthful, it's misleading to the residents because the architectural plans show additional second non-incillary use, a huge wedding hall, AKA a banquet hall, available for rental every night. The building plans show a 15,000-square-foot ballroom, and also referred to as a multipurpose room on the new lines plan. Talks about the specific rooms, he says the wedding hall appeals to be larger than the actual school premises. There's no way that this wholly separate and rigorally operated business can be considered ancillary.
Okay.
Credit. The board engineer said the wedding hall is intended as a second use of the site. Applicants fully aware the banquet halls are prohibited in the OR10A zone. It's not a creative phrase, you know, what the board's professionals, not the board's professionals, what the applicant's professionals say, and he believes that the planning board has no authority to approve this non-conforming use. He objects on two grounds. The notice is deficient, and scroll down, and also, the planning board lacks jurisdiction to hear a change of use, or otherwise illegal use.
Okay.
In front of the wrong board.
Okay.
Several zones where it's permitted, this is not one of them. And then, there's another one that's up now, from Joseph Riger, "It's different when the hall is unnoticed, when it's lifted as a school, not every school's hall is a law school waiting to happen." And then, Mr. Becker wants his comment. Reiterate that smuggling and prohibited use banquet hall inside the walls of permitted use does not convert prohibited use into a permitted use.
Okay, thank you. I'm closing it to the public, and I would ask for a motion.
We need to open to any call-in users.
Okay.
And we have to address two issues that I'm waiting for.
Okay.
We have to open to call-in users.
Okay, no, I'm waiting. Just tell me when you're, everybody's unmuted.
I don't want to unmute while, Jillian's doing it, I don't want to do it.
Yes, I'm doing it.
Thank you. Just a minute, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We have call user, I'm sorry, Jillian.
I'm sorry, Ally, I believe I've unmuted everyone now.
Thank you. Call-in user ending in 51 is waiting to speak. Can you give us your name for the record?
Joseph Notice.
Okay, are you the applicant?
Yes, I just wanted to...
You have to, no, you have to be affirmed, Rabbi Noss.
Hold on a minute. You're the applicant? You have an attorney, you have professionals, they didn't call you as a witness, you don't get to make arguments twice, there's no two-bites the app. Mr. Becker didn't...
I just want to...
Okay, we heard from your attorney, please, Rabbi Noss. Okay.
I want to say something.
The attorney just said, the attorney just said that you don't get to talk twice, your attorney.
I know, but it's something that you didn't mention that's important, I wanted to be on the record.
First, firstly, you have to be affirmed.
Unless Mr. Becker wants to call him as a witness.
I want to talk as a public.
Who's the next member? Please mute the number ending in 51. Call you as a witness, you don't get to make arguments twice, there's no two-bites the app. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to be heard?
Rabbi Noss, I would like to hear.
Okay. I'm closing it to the public, there's echo. Okay.
Who is, we got to make sure we heard from everyone. The number ending in 83, did they want to say something? Let me open them.
That's, that's Dave.
Same one?
Okay. That's Dave.
Okay, I'll mute them then.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, the applicant would like to add, may add one comment, and I don't know what it is, I need to call him as a witness at this time.
Okay.
I apologize.
Somebody wants to add, and then you can add it.
I have to call him offline. I'll mute myself first.
Rabbi Noss.
Okay, Adam, I think we should go, move on, because I have to leave, a few people have to leave by 8 o'clock.
Yeah, we could adjourn this so that we could hear is what he has to say.
Hello, that's me. Hello, Mr. Herzl?
Okay, I'll keep that.
Mr. Herzl, this is Yenison Sanders speaking.
You have to be, you have to be affirmed then. Mr. Jackson, you want to affirm Mr. Sanders?
Sanders, do you swear?
Rabbi Sanders, I'm sorry.
Swear with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
That's it. The angels are not getting in.
Add, and then you can add it.
Who is that? Who's that terrible echo coming?
I'm sorry, I'm getting confused. The individual speaking from the number ending in 83?
Mr. Herzl, this is Yenison Sanders.
Rabbi Sanders, I gave Rabbi Sanders permission to speak. He has to be affirmed.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody else could be muted. Yes, you have to be affirmed. Hold on, Rabbi Sanders, Mr. Jackson will affirm you.
Rabbi Sanders, do you swear from testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, you want to speak even though your attorney was happy with the way the case went in?
The Rabbi Sanders is not the applicant.
Oh, he's not, I apologize.
Those, Rabbi Noss, Rabbi Sanders, what do you want to say?
This property belongs to me, and I have made up with Rabbi Noss that I would go ahead and sell him the property on certain conditions.
Mr. Rennet, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you take over, because I have to leave? There's five people inside me to finish this up. You have, well, let me just make sure you have, you have Mr. Rennet, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Or... I don't see five people.
I don't see five people.
Ally, who's still?
Yeah, one second, I want to make sure we have a quorum.
Ally, who's still on?
Mr. Herzl, if you leave, we'll have a quorum.
Okay, so, Mr. Rennet, please take over, I'm signing off. Mr. Rennet, are you there?
Are you there?
Okay, so please take over.
Ally, is there a problem with my mic? With the echo?
Someone's got a terrible echo.
No, I don't, I didn't, yes, it is you right now. Yes, it is you right now.
So, probably not a good idea for me to take over, give me a second.
Well, as long as you're off, when you're not speaking, it's fine. It's fine.
Okay, so I'll mute myself as I don't speak. Okay, so recognize Rabbi Sanders, please.
You know, this property belongs to me. It does not belong to Rabbi Noss. However, Rabbi Noss and I happen to be very good friends, and we made up, we made up different things that would be dependent on me selling him the property. Hello?
Yes, we're waiting for you to speak.
Did you unmute me?
Yes, we hear you talking, and then you stopped. Rabbi Sanders, you can continue.
Okay, so Rabbi Noss and I had made up...
Rabbi?
I'm sorry, I find that my voice is not being heard. We made up that the depth of 30 feet of trees would remain in the front of the property.
Yes, we're waiting for you to speak.
So I don't know why I can't speak.
You are speaking, and we hear you.
Okay, so Rabbi Noss said, we made up that a depth of 30 feet...
Is there any, any other conditions?
This is really not working here, I mean, unless I'm the only one not hearing it.
Chairman? Chairman?
Yes.
Time table. I'm not sure if any of the conditions of the sale depend on this application. The applicant, anybody that can, you know, submit an application on a certain property, that does nothing to do with the board. If they have an issue and they can't close on the property, it's nothing but the, with the board. And we're up to here, I think we should continue it, unless there's something else.
Yes, but if, but if there are certain conditions that he wants included in the resolution and the applicant agrees, we could put it in, but I don't hear what he has to say. Rabbi Sanders? Rabbi Sanders?
I hate to hear myself again, that's not fun.
I just re-muted him. I think the issue is the rabbi is listening to the broadcast, possibly on watching the video, so we're hearing the delay in ourselves talking, and then when he goes to speak, and he stops, and we see something else, it's just throwing off his timing. He needs to listen just on the phone.
By the way, Mr. Isaacson was thrown off, his internet is out, so, do we still have a quorum?
Not without Mr. Isaacson, but if he can call in and he's able to listen that way, that would work.
In the meantime, could you call in?
I'm stepping away for one minute, a time limit.
All right, let's take a, let's take a two-minute, yes, let's take a two-minute recess, and I texted him the info, but he's not responding to my texts, so I'm not sure if he's calling or having phone issues as well. We'll give it another minute. We'll give it another minute.
Ally, I am back on.
Thank you, Levy. Chairman, would you like me to speak to Rabbi Sanders to try to get his comment on the record?
Yeah, it's like, it, it seems like, I just got the phone with, with Rabbi Notice and Rabbi Sanders. They, they have certain things which they want on the property to stay. Rabbi Notice wants to be able to put it on the record, that's why he wanted to talk. And Rabbi Sanders wants the same thing, it has to do with, and we have to make sure that the plan is going to meet whatever they agreed upon is going to be. Like if they want 30 feet in front of the property with trees, we have to make sure that the plan has, could handle the parking with the 30 feet in front. So I think we should have the attorney call Rabbi Notice as a witness so they could put their agreement on record.
Yeah, and I believe, Mr. Renner, I believe that the, the applicant has met with, with Rabbi Sanders. And there are a few questions, there are a few comments they want to request from the board and see what the board says so that they can resolve it. They, they've been, they've been dealing it directly, not including me, so. I'd rather call him as a witness and, and let him say what he wants to say. Should be quick.
Okay, let's let him forward.
Do we have a full quorum?
Excuse me, Mr. Renner. Do you think it's the board's role to serve as a mediator if they haven't worked out exactly what they want? Don't you think?
I'm not asking the board to serve as a mediator. There's, there's some requests, because they're, they're not, they're, my understanding, there are not contingencies on the deal. It's a matter of, of a request of how the board wants to see something. It should be quick.
I, I, I think we should hear it. Let's hear what, what, what Rabbi Notice has to say and then we'll make it.
I would just want to confirm that we have the five members. I know everyone's in and out having service issues. I would just ask to confirm that the five members are on.
Um, I will just take a quick roll. We have, um, Mr. Meyer, are you here?
Here.
Mr. Sable?
Yeah, back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner.
I'm here.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
And Mr. Isaacson?
I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Faber, would you call your witness, please?
Yes, Rabbi Notice, are you there? Rabbi Notice? Rabbi Notice? Fourth time. Rabbi Notice?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm talking. You hear me?
Yes, now we hear you. Just let, 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 let Mr. Jackson just, just affirm you in.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm before this, swear over the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Joseph Notice, uh, from Benosse, OR 360 Oak Street. I'm not sure what happened to Rabbi Sanders, but I guess he got lost. Well, I just wanted to say what, continue where he left off. Uh, we've been neighbors for a lot of years and the front part of this property is actually owned by him and he's being very kind and willing to sell it to us in order that we could build another much needed school in Lakewood. Um, with that being said, there was a few conditions that he wanted. Like he started mentioning about having a buffer over with a row of trees in front of the building and, and along Oak Street, I guess, in front of the parking by Oak Street, that was one thing. And number two is he wanted for traffic. Um, and that's what they mentioned before about having Caldwell as a one-way. Um, if we could have that when you exit Caldwell, it would be a right turn only. Uh, if that's a possibility. Um, and then also, I know that, if somebody had mentioned about making Lambert also a one-way. Is that, uh, going to be part of the approval? The point is we're trying to, that.
And sorry to interrupt, I, I missed number one, what was the first item?
The first item was to have a nice, uh, row of trees as a buffer along Oak Street. The whole front of the property should be, um, it should have a row of trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that going to interfere with the parking as it's set up?
Uh, possibly, uh, uh, that, I don't know, you know, that was the last minute thing. I don't know how many spots, if any, will affect. I don't know how much off we are from Oak Street now.
Is the agreement 30 feet of trees?
I can't hear.
Was the agreement to have 30 feet of trees?
Yeah. The buffer of 30 feet, yeah.
So, uh, uh, could we ask Mr. Flannery if that would work?
Please.
Mr. Flannery, are you there? We don't hear you.
Phone says I'm unmuted.
I just unmuted him.
Ah, thank you. Um, we, we, we do have a couple places where we have 30 feet, but we would lose some parking uh, in order to provide 30 feet all the way along. I, I would say we'd lose, we'd lose about 12 spaces.
The applicant would agree to do their best to, to get as much, as close as possible to the 30 feet without losing any parking. In the areas that we would lose, we would put a little bit less, um, but we will do substantial buffering, but not to lose any parking.
I just got a text message from Rabbi Sanders. He wants to speak and he wrote a depth of 30 feet of trees to remain in front of the property along the whole length. And then he wrote want to speak. Okay, what's the second item? We're sticking with Rabbi Notice in the meantime, what's the second item?
Um, in regard to Caldwell, they said was going to be a one-way. But we wanted it to be a, a, a right turn only, means heading, I don't know what that is, the east or heading towards Albert. Means the traffic should go out and make a right.
Then, then might as well make it a one-way.
He, he said, he had mentioned, someone had mentioned making it a one-way. I agree with that.
But that's not up to the board. That's not up to the board, it's up to the township and the committee and we have issues with other properties. I don't know if you can commit to that. I would, we would love that, I mean, I would love that, I don't know if illegally you can commit to that.
Why, why wouldn't they want that?
Because it's not a road just for this school. This is the road that has other property owners further down south that might need this roadway.
I know, but, but the other school that already came on the other side of Caldwell wasn't conditioned that they have to improve it at all. So it's obviously not going to affect them. And, and and, and, um, there's, I don't know what else is further there.
Rabbi, I had the same argument and I, I, I would love that to happen. But they had an argument further down south, there's other properties, and I know there's other schools coming in uh, for, for buildings over there. Again, i- i- if we can somehow make it happen, I, I would be very happy. And I think people that are coming to this site will also be very happy and it'll be a big safety improvement.
Right.
Okay, I, I think, I don't know, there's, there's too much going on in my text. Rabbi Sanders said now Vermont Avenue, Lambert Avenue should not be paved and will be left unimproved. I don't know, it seems like that that's like redesigning what we have here currently and.
Should we move this to the next meeting? Chairman, should we call it again?
I feel that we should straighten this out and actually move it and get this all.
We, we should and it.
Figure it out.
We should and, and the two witnesses really should be texting.
To, to, to anyone, you know, that what, what they want to say should be through this format and not through a private text. So.
I, I understand that, and that's why, and that's why I read it out loud.
And I also understand we're having technical difficulties and you're going out of your way to try to make things work. So like I said earlier, there's no page in the manual what to do when electric storms, you know, makes this whole thing a little, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I think from what I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from all the different parties.
Maybe we should wait.
We're losing our quorum.
Applicants and.
God damn it. I'm muting everybody because you keep talking over me. We're losing our quorum. Levy Isaacson needs to leave. So we're going to have to carry this.
So let's, let's, let's carry it, let's announce it.
And, and while that's being carried, I would, you know, my, my instruction to the board is going to be, these two should not be working out their differences and have, if they want to put a document and they want to amend the plans to shovel kind of buffers or tree save or whatever, that should be on the plans. That's not something they should be asking for at this stage. They're, they're basically co-applicants if one starts selling the property to the other. So they, they got to get their act together.
Okay, well, let's, let's announce the adjournment.
Just, Mr. Chairman, we should have to give a, a thank you for New Lines and the applicants for putting a very nice application together.
What about the attorney?
As usual, the back.
Okay, um, Ally, do you have this? You know when you want to adjourn it to?
Well, not, at this point, nothing is going to be heard next week because we just carried two applications onto it and a correspondence. So, I mean, we could put it on next week and everything else is going to get pushed off.
Well, might as well renotice with the banquet hall.
Or put it next week if we know that, I mean, the Rabbi Sanders is asking for changes to the plan that's going to affect the site plan and make us lose parking. So I think Rabbi Sanders and Rabbi Notice need to come to an agreement whether that full 30 feet needs to be trees or not, and then put it on the plans. Send that to us so that it can be reviewed by Terry or Dave before the meeting. And then the board will have the actual plan showing what they've agreed upon before they're asked to vote on it.
And you know what? If they're revising the plans and it's showing taking away parking, et cetera, that should be on file 10 days before the hearing. You know, in, in other jurisdictions, if your case has to get adjourned because you don't have it, you know, you're not fully, uh, you, you, your, your plan hasn't been fully formulated. You know, they asked for a certain approval, the reviews were based on that, the whole original case. And then after the end, we have someone who's the seller says, well, I want more, I want to change. I mean, that's just not the right order. So, and, and it's not unusual in other towns to get adjourned for months, literally. So.
Yeah, I know, but we want to get it done as quick as possible. Ally, when's the next time that you have availability to put it on the schedule?
If they're going with the plans that they have now, it doesn't really make a difference. June, June 29th is the next time that we realistically have availability to hear anything. That would give them time to renotice if they want and revise the plans. Otherwise, you can put it on June 15th or the 22nd and expect that other schools and applications that have been carried a number of times are going to get carried again.
Yeah, on behalf of the applicant, I would just ask to move it to next week's meeting. We will resolve these issues internally and we will address them. Obviously, if significant changes have, occur, then we're going to have to amend the plans, we understand that. I believe we're going to work, be able to work this out internally without an issue. And I would ask that we, we carry just the one week.
Okay, let's, let's do one week and then if we have to carry again, we'll carry.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, would you like me to make that announcement? You're muted, but I think you said yes. Okay. Uh, members of the public, be advised that application SP 2419 Benosse is being tabled and carried to our next meeting, June 15th, 2021, 6:00 PM in this meeting format. No further notice will be provided. I'd like to remind the board that anyone who was here tonight will need to be present next week so that we can maintain our quorum and not have to start the application over from scratch.
I, I have a better idea, everybody should just listen to the, to the recording and let me off. Okay, let's move on to adjournments, what else do we have?
We do not have any bills, the correspondence was carried, we just have minutes to approve.
Is there a motion on the minutes?
Move. Yes, I'm stable.
Second? All in favor, say aye, thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
See you next week.
See you next week.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you, everyone.